Call the meeting to order and ask if anybody's recording? No? And I would also introduce our new associate member, Mike King.
Thank you.
And I don't know if you've -- have you met everybody?
I have.
Mark, Yanko, Ken?
I've met everybody.
Everybody? And just one brief disclaimer regarding some recent press that seems to object to the way the drive-through zoning change was handled. There was a public hearing held in this room, and we did not alter anything between then and town meeting. And I don't know if it was misrepresented in the press or what, but the problem was somewhere else, not here, as far as I can tell. Anyway, first item on the agenda, meeting minutes for May 9th. That should say April 9th, shouldn't it?
It probably should.
I was not present, so I'll have to -- let's see, we got -- two members were here.
She printed out the minutes just before the meeting, so I assume she got in here and changed.
I'll have to leave it to you and Mark for accuracy here. I don't --
Entertainer motion to accept the minutes with a correction of the date of May 9th, 2018.
No, it was April 9th. Any discussion? Meeting done. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And one extent, no, two. No tensions. This is -- That's all we've got for minutes. Next is Bob Perry for an A&R on Square Island Road. Oh, there you are.
I'm here, I'm here. Good evening, gentlemen, ladies, we had some ladies on this board. Good evening, Mr. King, I'm Bob Perry, I'm happy to meet everybody, including you.
Nice to meet you.
Oh, I have here before you tonight a farm aid plan drawn on behalf of 96 Realtor LLC, whereby they're creating one more lot. Plan also has those two parcels, as well as the one lot. I don't think there's any questions, the adequacy of Square Island Road. I understand from the clients that at one point in time, this board asked that Square Island Road, the travel poppy widen back out since it had been closed up over the years of upgrading and -- so that was done. And I know that because I did that at my solar system installation. So, the lot that we're proposing is the first lot in basically on Square Island Road, second lot in, I'm sorry. It's a huge lot, 130,000 square feet, plenty of upland, layover required, and adequate for 180 feet. So, it seems to me that it's a pretty straightforward building. Questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Bob, is that the parcel that has that -- because the road goes across here?
That's on parcel A, yes. If you're talking about that little --
The one that takes the left?
Yeah, that's on parcel A.
You've got frontage on right-of-way shown, is that in the center of the road you're showing your frontage?
No, what they do here, GAF does this a little different than I would. They show the ownership to the center of the road, being a private way. The 180 feet is along the layout of the road. So, the line that they show is in the center of the road has little to do with this being a farm aid plan.
So, this buddy's seeing what the frontage is right there. I see 128 feet.
Along the right-of-way, it's 180. 60, okay. Well, you show parcel C, do you think that reflects the original layout of Square Island Road?
Parcel C? I believe it does. Well, you say the original. If you go back to the mid-1800s, it may not, okay?
I don't remember that back that far.
I don't remember back that far either, but I suspect having researched some of the work, it may not. But ever since the town's been tracking this on assessor's maps, it's pretty much shown that. Now, this parcel C, quite honestly, is going to go to me to combine with some of my land there. So, it'll disappear at some point. I'll be before this board asking to do a combination for me.
Or if you move the road over, you'd have frontage.
That's true.
I mean, that's one of the nicest lots in there, I believe. I'll just think another right place.
You are, you are.
Let's subdue its pleasure.
Entertainer motion to endorse. Any discussion?
That's something stuck to me. I know, I know.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? exchanged? Yeah, I can find the pen.
Nothing in the box.
Can't find the pen.
Town's on a budget.
Don't scare me.
And I signed the paper copy here.
Okay. Save it for the next one.
Want this in your packet?
Well, thank you very much.
Next, we have another approval not required, play of Buzzards Bay Coalition and Perched Incorporated.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, I'm Bob Rogers with GAF Engineering, representing the Coalition and Perched this evening.
Apparently the water department must have broke a water main in Hathaway Road or other construction, broke a water main. So, I'm getting all these calls for dirty water and low pressures.
So, this plan is primarily intended to convey 40, 45 acres, basically, of conservation land to the Buzzards Bay Coalition. There's a number of lots, maybe seven or eight separate parcels right now owned by Perched. This plan would combine those, create the 45-acre lot 1004B for conveyance to the Buzzards Bay Coalition. Perched would retain parcel 1004A, labeled as not a buildable lot. And Perched is changing a lot line at, what do we call it? Parcel 1036A is a sliver of the creek where, basically, Perched would like to own the south side of the creek in that area. So, they're retaining from the center line to the south side. And then if you go a little to the right, just where it says Marsh Creek, there's a portion of the creek there that is saying owner is unknown, the area's a Burgess. So, lot 1002 from Perched is, it's basically staying the way it is. We had quite a discussion back and forth with the town planner and had some several colored versions to try and make it more clear. I have several copies of the assessor's map, if anyone wants to look at it. But so, all of these dashed lines are existing parcels owned by Perched to go to the Buzzards Bay Coalition. Plan purpose underneath the zoning data that states that. We have a zoning circle over by Great Neck Road, but again, this whole 45 acres is going to be conveyed out.
Entertainer motion to endorse the plan.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Exchanged?
Better have an easy one once in a while, sir.
What's that? Yes.
We can continue until later on if you want to stay.
I think I have an appointment at home. I did my six years on Manapoisah Planning Board, but that was back in the late 90s. Now, I'm semi-retired.
It's okay, we're gonna take frustration on the next client.
Could be a nice night for everyone.
William Atwood, 47 Shawn Circle.
Good evening. My name's William Atwood. And what I would like to do, if anyone's familiar with the area, I have the Cranberry Boggs that are out behind the old Bennys. And to get to it, you have to go down Shawn Circle, which is by the family pet store. And then you take a right into the road, and I own the road going in. And when I purchased a property a long time ago, they gave me a number at the town hall for 47 Shawn Circle. The problem I have is, when you come in the trailer park, the second trailer in is number 47. So, anytime I try to get anything delivered or anything like that, it's just been not an easy task all the time. And I feel bad for the people out front, known for a long time. So, I'd just like to take the name, the number of 47 Shawn Circle, it's a private road, it's mine. I don't want the town to have to do anything to it. I maintain it. And all I would like to do is change it from 47 Shawn Circle to Atwood Farmway. So, it would just, and I need it to be, I'm assuming, registered with the town as far as that it is a road for, say, a 911 call, or if I have to have an emergency or something, they'll know it's a road that's there, basically. That's what I'm trying to do.
Is that the number, please?
What's that?
Number one?
We could do number one if you want, we could do any, any number you want, other just not 47. Or actually, from 50 down, we could do 55 Atwood Farmway, we could do 1 Farmway, it doesn't matter. Because it just, it's a dirt road that goes into gravel road that goes into the Cranberry Boggs.
Billy, you was gonna build a house in the back, you never got a permit.
What's that?
You never got a building permit for your house?
It's a mobile home.
Yeah, but at one time, you was going for the house.
I did, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they were still referring it to as 47?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, this is the old Bennys.
Now, in naming this --
Okay, this is where you get access.
Stating it's of sufficient width and grade.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Further development, or just assigning an address to it.
Yeah. Oh, I'm never gonna develop anything. It's all Cranberry Boggs. There's no, there's no actually buildable lots, except for where my mobile home is, I believe.
I'm looking for one. Was this, did you run this by the 911 system?
I haven't, because I didn't know how to do that. I believe that I have to have it so that it is there first, and then I can go by them and say, this is what I want to do.
We sent this around to all the departments on the bottom of the road name application form, which includes EMS, police department.
Yes.
I don't think there's any conflict with the name offhand, but...
No, I, there isn't another one that I know of in Wehren with that name.
I would just recommend we just give it a number. Part of this was a cultural exercise, right?
I can't get the mail delivered there, they won't do it. I have a P.O. box in Wehren.
I believe that --
Even once it's, even when I had the 47 as a thing, because the mailboxes for the trailer park are right, almost directly across from where my road comes out, I asked the post office, I went to the Postmaster General to see if I could put a mailbox there, and they said no, because he had, his route was to deliver that many parcels to that property, and it can't be changed. That's what I was told.
Can, can -- Most of the mobile home parks have a Cranberry Highway address?
Yes.
And then units.
Yes.
So, that park would be 2900 Cranberry Highway?
Right.
Unit 47, and you couldn't, doesn't work for you.
Ken, as far as the process, as far as the number goes, we wouldn't assign the number, that's assigned to the assessor's office. That's assigned by, actually, by the building inspector.
Okay.
He does that now, too? Yeah, he does that now, too.
It doesn't matter, any number they want would be fine with me.
Long as it's six digits.
Yeah, I'm getting old, let's keep it kind of simple.
So, you would not be naming the driveway off of Shawn Circle, the Garden Hills, Garden Homes Estates, but you'd want to name that strip of land?
The, my road going in, off of Shawn Circle, yes. It's directly off of Shawn Circle, my road going in.
Well, there's the driveway from Shawn Circle going to the, to the property line, and then your property extended beyond that.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if you could name the driveway off of Shawn Circle within their property?
It's not, well, it's within their property, yes.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't see a problem if, if I get along with the people that own the trailer park really well. We've been neighbors, Beverly and her husband. Actually, her husband just joined the Waynam Community Associates with me. So, I don't see a problem with them having me put a name on there at all. I know it would be off of their road, but it's, I don't know, it's been there since I was a kid, so I don't know if that would make a difference. But I don't see them having a problem with it at all.
So, you're suggesting it go from the blacktop of Shawn Circle in?
Yes, in.
And you're questioning whether it goes from Cranberry Highway in?
Oh, yeah, no, it wouldn't be from Cranberry Highway in. It would be just from the edge of Shawn Circle Road into my property, that way. It would have nothing to do with Shawn Circle, except for --
No, I was actually questioning from Shawn Circle, the pavement of Shawn Circle to his property line, which is a, which is a --
And from then, yeah, where is your property line there, right?
It's right on the road, edge of the road, because my road comes right out onto Shawn So, it's right on the edge of the road of Shawn Circle. And I believe that must be a private road also, correct? The town --
Shawn Circle is essentially a driveway.
It's a circle, yeah, it goes in a circle.
It's a driveway, too, through the, through the mobile home park.
Right, right. But I believe it's a private road, correct? Because they, I know, I helped plow the road in the wintertime when it gets tough and stuff, because I have a load of it.
It's essentially private property.
Yes.
Doesn't have a designation as an official road.
No, not with the town, no.
So, now, you said you had, you owned Shawn Circle from your driveway to the Cranberry Highway?
No, from my, from the edge of Shawn Circle into my property, I own.
So, that's why I was getting that. I mean, I think your driveway or whatever, your road?
Yes.
Existed prior to that mobile home park?
Oh, yes, it did.
And somehow connected to Cranberry Highway, was, is that, so that's...
I believe there must be a right -- I believe there must be a right-of-way in there for me. I'm sure.
It was back before my time.
Yeah. Yeah, because that was all part of the Bangs bogs, which are Star Bog, Maple Springs. The whole chain of Cranberry bogs that came out of there.
Days of beating.
But I was just, wanted to see if I could just change that, just to make things easier for me and the people out front there.
Is there a problem with that?
Well, we haven't gotten any responses from the agencies that we sent this to, so I asked the, uh, the police chief this afternoon, and he said he was gonna check on his nine-one-one call center.
Is there an issue of having a private road off a private road? I mean, I, he obviously has rights to it.
Probably if you dug back in time, there must, that has to be an ancient way, Charlie.
It's probably just a right-of-way in some respect. I don't see any real issues with it, with the exception of, if you're gonna bother naming it, you're probably gonna want a street sign. So the question is, where would you place the street sign? The only thing I'd suggest, uh, here would be that maybe some arrangements be made at the beginning of the driveway at Sean Circle, to get permission to erect a street sign that says-
I, I actually, I put one on my property, so I-
Can you see it from Sean Circle?
Yes. And it's a, and it's a, an official street sign. I just put it up to try and make things easier for people when they come to find me. I've been telling them, look for that sign.
So long as EMS knows about it, and knows there's a sign there, and they can see it, within a-
Yeah.
I think what you're suggesting is one out by Cranberry Highway that says Sean Circle, and then Atwood Farm with an arrow.
No, I don't want that.
That would, I think, only confuse it a little more.
Yeah.
But at least to have a sign at the beginning of that road is probably the appropriate thing.
There is one there, and it's very visible, so. It's a regular street sign.
Another one that says formerly forty-seven Sean.
So we need a motion to, uh, push this forward, or?
Uh, I don't see any reason not to, but you wanna make it pending the approval of nine-one-one?
Nine-one-one, and and the number will be assigned by the building commissioner?
Used to be, but it's like, when they gave it to-
They gave it, gave it to the building commissioner.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's my motion.
That's your motion?
Yeah.
To approve it pending the clearance by nine-one-one system?
Second?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So?
I still, I still wish we can go down and get some herring, though.
You can, you just can't get caught.
I can go visit you, right?
Be awfully expensive herring.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, next, we have the continued public hearing for Heidi Dobbins Moss, Spring Avenue, special permit and site plan review.
Ken, where we down, three buildings on that property now?
Eight, you know.
Three buildings, right?
I got your-
I caught that.
Just seeing if he was paying attention. This is the, uh, the old one. You have a copy, Charlie?
Yes, I do.
You have two copies there.
We're gonna slide over, Mike.
Familiar with this area? Perry's Ice Creams up here, twenty-eighth over here.
Mm-hmm. All right.
Highway concrete's down the road.
Well, where we're at here, and-
Um, basically where we're at, um, Ed Glass has been working with the town engineer. Um, they came to some agreement this afternoon, I believe, on infiltration for the drainage on the property. We've reduced the number of units down to eight. There's four buildings of two. We've gone through the whole process with perk tests for the infiltration areas. Um, worked with the landscape design architect, completed that. Under the recommendation of the board, we originally came in with ten units. Um, we thought nine was gonna be the number, but from one of the last discussions, last meetings, uh, I guess eight was the comfortable number. So basically, we, we, we feel at this point, everything has been complied with. And we're at the point now where we're looking to move this project forward, if possible.
To follow up with that, my name's Ed Glass from Existing Grade, and to gi- to give you the bullet points on the engineering changes that have happened since you've seen this plan. The original plan was designed for, um, nine u- nine three-bedroom units. This is now at eight two-bedroom units. So what that's done is it's reduced the size of septic system substantially, and it's also brought us underneath the two-thousand gallon threshold, which was triggering a lot of items. So we're not at that threshold anymore, so that's helped quite a bit. With some, um, discussions with the, with Charlie, and looking at it, we've enlarged the infiltration system, so we know now it will handle a hundred-year storms for both onsite and within the road. The plans that you have do not reflect that. That's a change that's just come up. And what I've done is I've brought some plans, I've marked it up in red, uh, initialed it, and plan on leaving those with you. I would've brought some sign plans, but my plotter died. Um, so those changes to the septic system, uh, excuse me, to the drainage system are reflective on this plan that's up on the board. Charlie picked up on a spot grade that needed adjusting. The plan also addresses that. We've changed the plan design enough that we now have no grading within the ten-foot buffer, which was of a concern prior, previously. So we're outside of the ten-foot buffer. Through a discussion with, uh, Charlie and the DPW, we've also reduced the length of the road extension in front of the project. So basically what we're doing is we're extending about twenty feet beyond our second entrance or exit to the site. Uh, DPW did not want us to, didn't really care to have to go that much further past the site for no reason, and we've left enough room to push snow out away. And we've also relocated one of the drainage systems that used to be in the middle of Spring Avenue, to be in on the sideline of Spring Avenue. The only issue that I am aware of that we still need to provide to Charlie would be, we need the O and M for the drainage system. Um, not an issue, we can get them the, the maintenance system for, for the projects. Short of that, I think we've addressed all engineering, uh, issues, and we're, we're pretty much ready to roll there. Yes, yes. It's still the same type of system, but what happened is, when you hit a two-thousand gallon threshold, it brings in other criteria per the state. Um, the, the units were always designed, and the interiors were always two bedrooms. I'm just, when I can design bigger, I do. But that over-designing was creating issues, so we've gone down to the two-bedroom, as shown on all the original plans from the beginning.
The stacks wanna be ten-foot stacks, wanna be hanging up there.
No, there are guest parking spots here still. Yes, and then there's also some in between the buildings. Yeah, we've relocated them, um, because of the massing of the buildings, but there are still guest spots.
Sagamore Beach, yes. Those are three-unit buildings, these are two-unit buildings, but essentially, the same buildings, slightly smaller. I think at one of the meetings, we looked it up, you saw the pictures of Ocean Pines and Sagamore Beach. It's essentially the same buildings, just slightly smaller. Yeah. That's the truth.
He didn't complain about the stack, it was you that didn't like the type, the flagpole.
We have the same issue on Sagamore Beach, that we've come up with a couple clever ideas for that. And one of them's not painted a candy cane.
Direct TV, dish, dish on it?
Actually, if you painted it black and put like a fake light hanging off it, it looks like a lamp post.
Fire departments, we, we didn't, we didn't change the circulation in the entrance, right?
No.
No, not at all.
No.
I, I certainly think it's more important to the lot size.
No, we still have these two catch spaces that we did before, but the infiltration system before was actually beyond, um, Fall Street, in the middle of what I was considering, an area of Spring Street that was never gonna be developed. That's why I'd put it there. But after the meeting, um, that was for the, if it ever did get extended, don't have it there, cause the town didn't wanna take the opportunity or have to move it at a later date. So we've relocated it into the shoulder.
Into the shoulder, the maintenance responsibility belongs to the town?
I don't know if that's ever been resolved.
That's, that's a private way when that's located, Mark. Uh, if you look about in the middle of the project, and just look up toward that MR thirty district zoning block, you'll see a line there that says nineteen eighty-seven Townway, with a dash line going across the road. All right, that, where that dash line is, that's the limit of the town. Then on toward Fall Street, it's a private way. So that full drainage system that's beyond that dotted line would be in the private way.
East River from back here.
Up to these folks to maintain it. Now, where is, you said Perry's is right here?
Perry's is, like, right here, right over here.
And Highway Concretes down here.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause we're, we would create a homeowners association, include that in the maintenance.
This one loops back, goes the road that Perry's is on.
Can I see where you're putting that drainage?
This one comes, yes, it stops.
Uh, yeah, if you could-
That's Mrs. Vasino, she lives right here.
This is Fall Street? Okay. End of existing pavements there. Cause of the traffic?
Oh, she's been living on it there in the street for years.
If this is your driveway, then I think-
People could use a security, or whatever, so.
If I have two driveways.
Okay.
I have one near the end of Fall Street, and I have one up here near my house.
I drove in there one day, and I could only go so far, and then I had to back out. This is well into spring, and it's quite a ways away from, uh, where your driveway is.
In spring, this area gets flooded right here.
This is before that, and it would be taking care of any of the runoff that gets, uh, to that area. So it has, it has nothing- That was commented on, but, uh,
And they told him that he couldn't have-
Wasn't decided that they would do that. And the original drainage system was up in here.
There was a lot of confusion, whether it was a two-
It's no longer there, pull back into here.
So that was his main concern here.
So you're a corner of Fall Street?
This property, right here.
And he abuts directly?
He abuts property, but it's pretty deep, it's all, it's all put in there.
There, there's no possible connection between those two. Well, I guess you could go off-road, I shouldn't say no, but there's lots of rocks at the end of Fall Street right now, to prevent passage to-
Should we put them there, to make sure that nobody can cut through the building this way, cause the kids will cut through, racing through on motorbikes and everything?
No, but I'll give the opportunity.
And did anyone search the Sunny Acres old, um, research that was there that they had at one time? That they had a home, could be built in there?
I said it wasn't, be single-family houses in a subdivision, this isn't part of it, but-
The Sunny Acres?
This, a long time ago, somebody said that the Sunny Acres original plans, they made what type of homes could be built in Sunny Acres, or the footprints that were raised on it.
Um, if you wanna address it, would you come up and, the microphone, identify yourself, please?
Dorothy Vasino, three Fall Street, and at one of the first meetings I was at, they were mentioning the original plans for Sunny Acres and the type of homes that were allowed to be built in there. And that was one of the very first meetings I was at. And they said that there was covenants at one point in time that was mentioned for the type of homes that were built for Sunny Acres. And I didn't know if it was ever addressed, because I went on vacation and didn't know if it was researched.
So the, generally, covenants like that have a, a thirty-year life. I don't know if there's anything different to support that, or whether-
We never, we never discussed that.
It was never brought-
It was never brought up at any meeting.
I, I brought it up, cause I was denied a duplex. And now- I, I was here at a meeting, where, where I was told I could not put two front doors in my house, because it became a duplex.
Would you come up and identify yourself for the record, please?
Hi, uh, my name is Joe Tavares, and I live at fourteen Summer Street, which is at the end of Spring Street, if you go all the way down there. And the first, the first meeting that we had over here, I was here. And I brought up the fact that I was not allowed to put two front doors in my house, because it became a duplex. And now, here we are talking about four duplexes in one little lot.
My understanding, if I recall that meeting, you would, as a matter of fact, that gentleman that was on the board, on the board now, was on the ZBA. You went to the ZBA for your situation, not the planning board.
They invited you to go to town hall to, to, uh, look into it further, and you never went down there?
I went to the building inspector. The building inspector stopped me from building. I had to get a special permit, okay? And I still was not allowed to put a front door. So that's why I was upset, because they said that if you had two front doors, it became a duplex. And I was not allowed to build a duplex in that compound there. I was never aware of that, but that's what I was told.
We understand that.
And here we are now, building duplexes.
We understand that, but you were also invited by the board and Mr. Buckland to come down to town hall to discuss it further.
Personally, between him and I, not, nothing to do with this. That was a personal thing, that him and I talked about here. And then you even gave me your card and, and all that. My, my complaint was, I could not build a, a duplex. And here we are, building duplexes.
Never-
Now, laws have changed. I don't know, I haven't read the books, but-
Exact- I don't know, I remember you, you coming before us before, and I don't know what the circumstances were around your denial.
My denial was, if I had two front doors, it would've become a duplex. I was trying to put an addition, and a front door and a back door, you know, to, you know, get out in case of fires and all that. If I had two front doors, because that addition was attached to my house. So if you had two front doors, it became a duplex. Duplexes were not allowed to be built there.
I, I don't know where that interpretation come from, but-
This is what, this is what the town did. They stopped production, and, and, you know, you know what I mean? It, it got, it got to that point. And then I had to come, you know, to meetings, and two of them, as a matter of fact, because we couldn't, uh, decide on the first one, and I, I get that ju- decide on the first one, and I, that gentleman, that usually sits over there embarrassed that I can't remember his name. He was on that planning meeting, or board meeting, or, you know, I don't, you know.
I think, I, I recall the conversation myself, was at the meeting. There's been, these gentlemen have been in front of us two separate occasions since then. This is the first time we've heard from any of Butters with any concerns at all. I have to agree with these gentlemen here, unless somebody can tell me different or show me a minute, this discussion of Sunny Acres did not come up in that original meeting, so.
I was here, you know, you remember the conversation, so how did that conversation did not come up in the meeting? Huh?
I remember your conversation about the front door. I don't remember anything about a covenant of Sunny Acres.
Well, I live on fourteen Summer Street, that is Sunny Acres. As a matter of fact, as a matter of fact, the back of my land, it's exactly where their, where their property is.
I think everybody recalls, you know, with the night you were here, but there was never any talk about a deed restriction, never anything mentioned about what you could build on Sunny Acres?
Why would I have brought that up?
How long ago did you try to do what you, what you're talking about?
Two thousand and five.
And you went through the zoning board of appeals, though? This is the planning board.
You know, that's where I was told to go, you know, you know, what am I supposed to do? Stop my own meetings and, and, and pick the people that I want?
No, honestly.
You know what, I'm not against building, but, you know, let's just treat everybody the same, okay? Cuz everybody has rights to build and, and, and fight, okay, but.
My own experience is two front doors do not make a duplex, there's other things that have to go into that.
You know, I just lived here, you know, I just lived there. You know, when a town official or a town inspector comes to my house and stops my project and tells me that, what am I supposed to do?
But, there's other parameters to, to make a duplex, but.
You know.
Like I said, I wasn't there, I don't know why you were denied, or had to alter your plans.
And I wasn't even trying to build a duplex, that's, that's the, that's the kicker. I was just, it was just because there was a front door, it became a duplex. Cuz I didn't want a duplex, you know, and, but anyway, that's, that's beside the point.
Do you have any direct concerns with this proposed plan?
I'm concerned with the water drainage that's gonna go in the back of my land, cuz my land is a lot lower than theirs. And, and, you know, I've seen these meetings where everything is addressed. If you remember the Dartmouth Mall, everything was all the hunky-dory, and those people across the street, you know, why, why are you making faces like that? This is why we, you know, we're, we're, we're over here doing it, I, I can see you out of the corner of my eye. Are you gonna guarantee me that I don't, I don't get any water in, in, in my land?
Well, I don't know that that can be a guarantee, I can tell you that these developers have done necessary engineering studies to ensure that this was not going to contribute to any additional water drainage.
And another question, is that compound allowed duplexes or not?
It's, it's an MR thirty district, which is multiple residential thirty thousand square foot lots.
And, and when did that become in effect?
Uh, I don't know how long that was MR.
Was it after two thousand and five, or before, or a lot before, or, you know?
It must have been before that, cuz. And I would have to say, just looking at the way things are laid out, that this piece of land was not part of the original Sunny Acres you referred to. It appears to be outside of that subdivision. Just at face value, I don't have anything to back that up, but it seems to be outside of that subdivision, which would not make it subject to the same covenants.
Now, what, maybe, maybe this question is for you. What avenues do we have if we end up with all that water back there and, and, and all that? You know, you guys will be long gone, and, you know, and then what?
They have designed the project to take care of all their drainage needs onsite, which how modern projects are supposed to do that. Based on a hundred year storm. There is probably a overflow mechanism in the event of more water than that. Which I can't point out right off the top of my head here, but.
And you're not going to the end of Fall Street anymore, you're saying?
No, the plant's right up there, if you'd like to take a closer look.
So how do people?
I think there were concerns offered early on that the residents didn't want that to be a cut through or an additional traffic issue.
So people are gonna go into your property and turn around, is that, is that how they, you know?
There's two ways in, one, coming in and going out.
So essentially creates a cul-de-sac.
A horseshoe.
The residents will push right back out to the main road.
I think the original.
And how far down are the, are the houses coming, to say Fall Street, you know, your, your duplexes?
Look at the plants, right there. You can see Fall Street there, and you can see the buildings.
This is Fall Street right here.
Yes, they don't even, anyway, no.
So how far are you?
They're gonna stop it.
How far are you from my property now?
This is Vasino, who's right here. And like I said, this is blocked on, it was never constructed, this wasn't constructed. Yeah, he comes in our Summer Street, this is Summer up here. We're, we're beyond the required setbacks. The setbacks are ten feet, we could, we can't get closer to that property line than ten feet, and we're maintaining that. And we're doing no work closer than ten feet to the property.
There's like a ten foot buffer around the whole property.
Where, where you've got your hand right now is your property.
A ten, a ten foot buffer puts you on, on Fall Street?
No, it doesn't.
No, it doesn't.
According to the stakes that you guys put up.
It has to stay within the property itself. Can't go outside the property, we don't own that property.
I, I understand, I'm saying, according to the stakes that you guys put, your stakes come, come to Fall Street.
Those could be.
That's the limit of the property.
Okay, so you're saying ten feet, so there's no way that you're not gonna hit Fall Street from, from the stakes that you guys put up?
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
The stakes that you guys put up?
Yes, I understand that. Yep, those are the property line stakes.
That's your property and my property.
Correct.
Okay, so you're saying that you're ten feet away from those stakes?
Correct, over ten feet. Over ten feet, yes.
Ten feet away from those stakes brings you over here to Fall Street?
In what way, in building? No, no.
I think you're moving in the wrong direction.
Yeah, you're going in the wrong direction.
Inward, through the buildings you're proposing.
Fall Street is. His buildings are this way.
Let me show you.
Okay?
Which hand's right there?
His property.
Does Fall Street?
Fall Street.
The original plan ended at Spring?
First building's right there.
Fall Street ended Spring Street?
The pavement stops right there before you hit Fall Street.
I mean, on paper, did it, didn't go beyond. On paper, goes through. I mean, the, the two streets are connected with an intersection. Yet to Springs, to Spring from Fall. The edge of the pavement stops well before you get there. It stops at this lady's driveway.
This is Spring Street here. This is where the pavement ends right here, pieces of house right here. And they use the driveway like that, and that's it, but this was.
Are they blue, are they blue flags, red flags, or pink? I'm not gonna argue with you about it, if we're not off the property, we're not on Fall Street, that's the bottom line. The lot is the lot, we can't go on the Fall Street.
That is true.
Like I said, they've gone from ten down.
With, with Spring Ave. Spring Ave is stopping before Fall Street.
Stopping before Fall Street.
One of these things in this board that you run into all the time is, is, is what the rule says.
Fall Street, come on. What was the?
I, I don't know, I don't really know what your question was, to be honest with you.
What was the point be?
The, what was the, elevation of the water table was established? They did some soil testing there. They also did a high groundwater evaluation based on accepted methods for evaluating the high groundwater when you don't see it in the ground. There is a calculation and a method that you can use, it's called the Frimter method, which is what Mr. Glass used. What you do is base that on wells that are monitored throughout the state, throughout the area, the general area on a regular basis, on a monthly basis, actually. And you take the monitored elevations of those wells within the calculation. You take the existing water table as you find it, or in the case you don't find it, you take the bottom elevation of your test pit, and you adjust the groundwater elevation up if that's what the calculation tells you to do. And that is what they did in this case. So it did raise the groundwater elevation somewhat. But it did not impact the location of either of the drainage areas, or any of the three of them. The long narrow one, which is in Spring, and the other two, which is the back corners of the, the site. It did not affect them substantially, so. Did it affect the depth? No. And they are above that maximum high groundwater elevation with the bottom of the systems. So I feel comfortable with what they have now on the plan. It goes by standard calculations and observations. They actually did the soil tests in there, so we have the reference information for the material that was found, which was sandy material. So they've done all that really can be expected of them on that basis for right now. Were there basements proposed here? And you've got adequate separation between water table, I would imagine?
We, we, we encountered no, no water. Based on elevation depths of fourteen.
Yeah, we were down fourteen feet, actually some holes were even deeper, but to get the groundwater, we, we're maintaining substantial distances, more than four feet from the bottom, if any infiltration system, more than five feet for the septic system. So we should be good on every time.
And the PERC tests we conducted for the septic system were done in December, and then the drainage testing was done in April. And everything that I've heard, this has been a record year for groundwater elevations.
Is there any, anyone else that would like to address the board regarding this project? Come forward and identify yourself.
My name is Kristen Frye, I live at twenty seven oh eight Cranberry Highway, which is on the outside of the Sunny Acres neighborhood. I grew up in Sunny Acres, my family still owns a home on Spruce Street in Sunny Acres. I just found out about this project. There was a meeting before this one here. I was actually out of town and I couldn't make it to the meeting, but that was the first I even heard of this development. So I don't wanna seem ignorant, just a single mom, a recent widow, I work third shift, I have two children. I try to be involved, you know, as much as I can. I just wonder if people in the neighborhood have an objection to this particular project. Is it past the point of stopping it or raising questions? Or I'm just wondering, you know, how late I'm joining the party, basically. I just wanna be aware, and I feel like I'm not, and this has happened really fast, and I would have been more involved if I could have, so I'm just curious.
The public hearing is still open, and your input is still welcome, so.
Okay.
If you have comments to make.
Like I said, I just wanna be informed, you know, it's not me to not get involved, and I feel like I don't know enough about it to even ask the right questions, I'm not even saying I'm necessarily opposed, I just feel like this is only the second I've heard of it, and I was just wondering, you know, are we past the point of no return? Or should I try to get some of these neighbors that talk about it, but don't show up to the meetings to get more involved? Or is it a done deal, I'm just kinda wondering, that's all.
Well, it is rather late in the process, it's, you probably heard, they've responded to the engineers' comments. They've reduced the size of the project. We've yet to be determined this evening if there's more information required.
These gentlemen have come in front of us for the last three months, there's been several public hearings. This originally started out as a proposed ten units. We asked them to come back with nine units, we asked them again to come back with eight units, they've substantially downsized. And we've taken the original input the Butters had brought to us when it was, the public hearing had first started. And I think that the best effort has been made by the businesses. Now, it is a special permit, in the way that it'll be multifamily, so you have a good understanding of what's going here?
Yes, and I mean, that's ultimately my concern, or, or why I even care, is I just feel like growing up in that neighborhood, it's for me, just gonna change the flavor of, you know, and that, that's life. But I wanna be involved, and I wanna be in the know, and make sure that people that are, are saying things within the neighborhood know what they're talking about too, you know?
I think, I think they, they have a proven track record of developing these types of developments, Sagamore Beach, right? You've seen the, the latest design?
No.
This is the architectural design, if you wanna look at this. And you understand the plot of land?
Yes.
So this is acts like a cul-de-sac. Right, so everything is self-contained, this plot of land, and what the discussion was earlier is, we'll stop short.
Just the way things.
So we'll stop short, so this whole intersection of Fall Street will be uninterrupted for the most part. So they'll come off the main road and be able to turn back into it. Now, this is my personal feeling, there, there's, there's a development very similar to where I live over in West Wareham. The last time they were in front of us, I personally expressed concern with maximizing the vegetation around this, so it wasn't just an open field. And I think they did a good job of coming back with that, so. I feel that there's been plenty of opportunity for the neighbors and the Butters to speak at these past meetings. These developers are spending real dollars on re-engineering for the wishes of this board who's looking after the interests of, of the community. So I'll have to agree with the chair, it's not closed, we just need to hear some good solid discussion on why they shouldn't.
I believe you also suggested to them in the January meeting that they should also reach out to the neighbors, not just the Butters. And I don't believe they've done that, I believe, the only, that they did contact was the immediate neighbors, the Butters, none of the neighbors. They didn't go out to any of the other neighbors like Kristen.
Right, well, that's kinda how I feel, like, like it was almost, by, by the time I heard of it, it was kind of already a done deal, or at least it seemed that way. And like I said, forgive my, my ignorance, I am, I do my best to attend, I don't have a lot of time, I, I wished I would have been more.
The first meeting would have required them to show evidence of notification. So what, the requirement says one thousand feet from.
Three hundred feet.
Three hundred feet. So they, they were required to show evidence that notification was given to everyone within a three hundred foot radius of the report. Right, so, so outside of that, just like any one other, one of us, it's, it's, again, our personal responsibility in the community to read the paper on those notifications. So the certified mail receipts come back to us, we get proof, evidence that three hundred feet around was notified, and then public announcements were put into the paper. So, again, it's still open for discussion, but in regards to a best effort by the developer, they've come in front of us three times, and, and I'm sure they would have valued. they've come in front of us three times, and, and I'm sure they would have valued any input each time they were in front of us.
I wish I would have known, you know, and I, I take responsibility for a part of that, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
The property is in, uh, people, the places they did, they...
I have a question, please. Do you talk of a special permit?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Are you talking of a special permit? What is, what is it that you're asking, or what has it been you're granting that requires a special permit?
The, let me ask a question.
It's a requirement of the zoning bylaws that a multifamily project of this size get a special permit from the planning board. A special permit is a, a particular permit under state law that requires certain findings be made before they issue the permit.
So they're asking for a special permit because the lot is too small for the amount of buildings that they want to put, or is it because they want to put, uh, for duplex? I don't, I don't understand.
It's because they want to put five or more units on the one lot.
Okay. Because of the lot size, you're asking for a special permit?
No, because of the use that's proposed.
The use, you mean as in families?
Number, the number of units.
The number of units.
Correct.
If you compare it to your subdivision, like you have a large lot, I think some of your neighbors do, it's kind of in the same mix as far as density goes, in a parcel that size, some places have, some part of the subdivision have more units per acre, some less, this kind of blends in with the, uh, eight units, the size that it's on. Any other information needed, questions?
Have you reviewed the landscaping plan, George?
The, um, I just...
I just got a call today and I just...
Yeah, no, no dialogue.
Right, and only on the front page.
Challenging landscape, right?
No, there's another, there's a separate landscape. You're using, you're leaving existing vegetation in the buffers?
Correct.
Protective system.
Pines.
Small, tall, what?
Some, some of them are fairly substantial, um, yes, it's just like it's any scrub pines, you know, but some of them are forty feet.
Any undergrowth or something that would provide screening?
No, that whole lot is, is pretty much easy to walk through, and these, these, um, Four Nor'easters really kind of opened it up too, brought down a lot of limbs.
And the common land is homeowners association, or...
Yes.
Would be any restrictions on the, what's done there, I don't, uh...
As far as what, Mr. Chairman?
As far as maintaining the buffers and use of the common area?
Well, when I, when I do the, I design the budgets for the condo association, so we, we work in the landscaping, um, maintenance into that, like we do over at Sagamore Beach. So everything will be maintained within the budget of the condo association.
So in other words, if you had a slack at it, didn't believe in painting or watching the vinyl siding, the association would make sure it was kept, kept up?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna be doing vinyl siding over there, just like, uh, Sagamore Beach, and trying to keep it as maintenance-free as possible, so the, the maintenance is easy and it la, looks nicer for a much longer period of time.
Yeah. Are you gonna, uh, keep control of the homeowners association for a set period of time and then hand it over to the new owners?
What I'm doing over in, uh, Sagamore Beach is we're holding it for five years and then handing it over to the association. But this is a smaller project, so it could be a lot less, just depends on how long it takes to sell it out and build it out.
Will all four units be built?
No.
Continuous, what, what is the sequence again?
I don't really know, honestly. I mean, we, it's, the, right now, the way things are in the business, I don't know if you guys are aware of what's going on in the business, it's pretty busy right now, so it's hard to get foundation guys to go in there and bang out four cellar holes for you at one time, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
It's actually easier for us to manage it if we're not doing them all at once, too. Um, it's less hectic.
But, but the, the continuous building is contingent on you selling the first units?
No, we don't, I do everything on speculation, so it doesn't matter if they're sold or not, we're putting them up.
You, you're, so you are committed to all four units?
Oh, yeah.
We're not gonna look back three years from now and just...
Oh, no, those things will be up.
Sitting on the lot.
Personally, my, my schedule is to be in and out of there within eighteen months to, to twenty-four months.
And as two-bedroom units, what's your, what's your market?
Well, the market studies that my realtors, you're talking about price point?
Uh...
Or people?
People, your, your, uh...
Demographics?
Well, the demographics are, are, are different for every town, but what we're seeing in Sagamore Beach is like, honestly, we're not even seeing any families at all. We're seeing either young or downsizers. That's what we're seeing so far.
Mm-hmm.
This price point is gonna be lower, so I'm not sure what's gonna happen over here, but my realtors tell me there's a, there's a, there's a demand, a big demand right now for it, so we don't know, we don't know. But what we're seeing in Sagamore Beach is young and then downsizers.
Leadership pressure.
Empty nesters.
We're, uh, four to four forty over there. We'll be in the low threes over here.
All the civil construction on the roadways will be completed in one evolution, though. You will form this, I'll call it a cul-de-sac, in, in one phase, right?
Oh, all the site work will be done, like, the driveway in and out?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's all gonna be done at once.
Okay, and then...
Nothing will be done down the road when it comes to that, like all the, all the cul-tech systems, all the drainage, everything will be done.
With a completed four units, so it'll be built with the intent of four units. And two, two of the structures share a common septic system. Am I understanding this right?
They all have the same septic system.
They all do.
That's where you get your chow, you kind of, I don't know, pipe in the middle.
The building has a septic tank, but they all go into the same infiltration system in the center of the circle.
What, what am I looking at over here? Is it disleaching?
That's the drainage for the roofs and the pavement.
Yeah, those are the cul-tech systems.
Yeah, there are two of those, there's one in each corner, and then there's the small one out in, in spring.
Okay.
Can I ask a question, George?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, when you do your, your road construction, um, are you going to put the binder down and let that be the traveling surfaces until you get your buildings built?
Absolutely.
And do the final top afterwards?
Absolutely.
So you'd be looking at building permits before the actual, all of the site work is completed?
As far as the top coat of the road, yes.
Uh, how about landscaping?
We don't, we can't do, we can't do landscaping until we get everything graded, the buildings up.
Sure.
You know?
Oh, the reason I ask is that, um, typically, on a situation like this, um, the board would be looking for security to be sure that, once your building permits have been secured and you're starting construction on those, uh, buildings, that all of a sudden, something happens and they don't see the final pavement being done. So, the board can deliberate about this if it wants to, but typically, this is the way it has happened in the past, is that if you're looking for building permits before all of the site work is done, that you need to post some form of security in order to make sure that...
Even if this is a private...
Yes.
driveway on a private lot?
Yes. There have been too many instances, unfortunately, where, uh, situations develop where the final paving, the final landscaping doesn't get done, and then the people who are living there are left with a si, a situation, uh, that they have to either put up with a, a lousy condition, or they have to put money out on their own to finish the, the work that was left. So that's a, a method by which the town can secure all of that construction to make sure that, that it happens.
Well, I've done surety bonds in the past where we, where, especially on a project this small, where, let's say we designate one of the units, one of the units doesn't get occupancy permit or building permit until all the work is done.
Uh, that's, that's something you could, I suppose, argue with the board, my, my personal preference, and I'm only working as a consultant to the board, would be that some sort of, uh, formal security be posted, so that in the event that something does happen, uh, the wherewithal is there, because if, um...
And who would determine that number?
There's no way that a, the planning board or the town in any way can go in on its own on the basis of you not having a, a building permit or a occupancy permit, I don't believe, and simply hold it up until you get that done unless, unless they, uh, issue the permit in that way.
I've been building for over thirty years and I have never seen a town require security on a private situation like this. Is this, is this common practice?
Yes, it is, yeah.
We, we just did this for Baypoint, didn't we?
Yes.
So, so Baypoint...
That's not the same animal.
Forty-eight, forty-eight units? You are, you are creating public access roads here, so i, if you only sell one unit and this does not get complete, and that one unit needs municipal services to that, the town's gonna pick up the cost of doing that. Uh, this, the whole, the whole economics of this is based on you successfully selling all four units, but if the market swings for some reason, or you decide Wareham's not worth finishing the other three units, we're not gonna have a complete product here.
So...
So the surety is to make sure that we have...
So who determines that? What's, what's the mechanism for that?
Well, y, you have the choice of whether you want a cash security, a, a bond, or there's the, what tripartite agreement?
Well, that's for subdivision streets, so it would have to be either a cash security or it would have to be a performance bond, I think, George.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but to answer your question, um, you would come up with an estimate for the work that is left to be done, uh, knowing that you want to pull building permits for each one of these four buildings. So if by the time you get that fourth building up, you don't have ABC done, then you come up with the cost estimate for doing that work, petition the, the board with a, or submit a copy of it, so that we can take a look at the unit prices and also the total cost.
Mm-hmm.
We would add a certain amount, a percentage over and above that for inflationary costs and the fact that if the town were to have to go in and do it, you would be looking at prevailing wage rates, not something that someone in a private situation would necessarily pay. So we would come up with a final price, once the price is determined, and if you selected a bond, for example, you would go to an insurance company and get that performance bond established, uh, and then present it to the town, the town council would take a look at it, and if he's happy with it, then they accept it as a security against the completion of that site work.
So, even though this does not involve construction of a, a new road to access this property?
Yes.
Well, I, I think it does, so you have a, a, a common way for four residents in which municipal services are gonna have to access into that?
We've, we've done that on municipal, I mean, not municipal, uh, commercial projects as well, where you're not necessarily looking at a road, but you're looking at driveways, you're looking at landscaping, you're looking at the grading, you're looking at paving, it's all the same thing, doesn't matter whether it's, uh, four units of residential housing or whether it's a commercial lot where they're selling garden supplies, it's the same deal. People come in and they want occupancy, they want occupancy permits before the job is finished, and then it never gets...
At what point would the bond have to be put in place?
I would say, and I'm only speaking for myself, that if it's your wish, that you want to immediately apply to the building inspector for, uh, foundation permits for four buildings, that that bond needs to be in place right then.
Before the building permits are...
Correct.
Issued.
Correct. You have the option, though, um, of reducing the amount of that bond as you go in, I assume that, uh, you're gonna start by clearing the site, put in your drainage infrastructure, uh, the drainage, uh, facilities in the back of these two rear units, uh, do the drainage construction that's in the street, the water main, uh, gas if there is any, um, maybe the septic system, get that in place, so that all of your plumbing and everything is ready to go in the streets, you don't have to dig those up. You don't need it at that point, but the minute you knock on the building inspector's door and you're looking for a permit to construct a building, then that's when, that's when the planning board would want to see that performance bond. In the meantime, if you continue to work on it so that some of those items were completed by the time you get toward the end?
Mm-hmm.
You can ask the board to reduce the amount of the bond. So at the tail end of it, you may only have a minor amount of things to be done. Does that help?
Yes. Well, I'd say the last thing to be done is probably the top coat on your way out, so, I mean, that would, you wouldn't, you wouldn't hold the entire bond until the top goes, just that value with a contingency.
Is that something, Kevin, you have the mechanism, the paperwork for that?
Yes.
Okay.
I can show you that.
Okay.
Well, lighting, lighting was addressed in one of these? Did we talk about lighting last time you were here?
I don't, I don't think so. We did it, the, the civil planners don't address it, I mean, there'd be building lighting, but not anything specific to the, to the roadways, or the driveways.
I would, I think you'd go with the driveway lantern, uh, type thing, driveway lanterns or lan, you know, something like...
Yeah, well, typically, I mean, each town's a little different, like, for example, over in Sagamore Beach, they want to let us put lamp posts up, because the neighbors don't want them. So we only could do individual lighting for each unit, and then we did ground lighting in front of their unit. So, I prefer the lamp posts, but I just think it kind of blends in with the neighborhoods, a lot of houses have them.
That's consistent with those neighborhoods, then?
Yeah. Most people, if you drive by, you see them, they have a lamp post. So we were gonna do ground lighting for like, where the driveway out in front of the units, low-level ground lighting, that's what we typically do, and then each, each unit has a... each, each unit has a garage, so there would be lights on the garage. Each unit has, on the front door, they'd have lights on the front door. We don't wanna go crazy with the lighting, but it has to be a safety thing too, so people can see. So we do, um, motion lights in the front of like the garages and stuff. It's actually a fine line where you wanna make sure there's enough lighting, but you don't want the neighbors to be upset with the amount of lighting.
Well, in recent subdivisions, we've allowed a lamp post connected to the house. You can't shut it off.
Right.
But the ground lighting is interesting also. Aesthetically, that might look nice.
I prefer it. Cause each, each one of those units, the front entranceway has an overhang over the front entranceway. We usually put recessed can up in there. So you have that recess light coming down on that and then you get the ground lighting in front of it, you know, by the garage and in the front of the unit. And then you get the motion lights. Like the motion floodlights.
But in no near says no building shall have floodlights. One, three. No number seven.
Yeah, you know why? Cause that note probably came over-
It did.
From Sagamore Beach.
Came over from Sagamore.
Cause that's, they don't allow it. Like I said, they don't allow it over there. But we did a, we did a hundred and twenty-three lot subdivision in Buzzards Bay and we had them on every house. No street lighting, but we had post lights, every house.
Well, say floodlights with motion detectors with the houses in this proximity, I think could be irritating for the neighbors.
I, I agree. And they're in such close proximity.
We, we, the town did away with, uh, the street lighting a while ago. We used to, we used to require-
Those can be controlled to, uh, direct the lighting towards the driveways and the walkways, floodlights.
So they're just going in the front, you know, pointing down kind of a thing, not out?
So they would just illuminate your own driveway and your own walkway?
Mm-hmm.
I think, um, it's a fine line over Sagamore Beach, the lighting that was required, it honestly looks like Fenway Park over there.
Yeah.
And, you know, when it first went on, we were like, lose your shot.
They wouldn't let us put post lights out or floodlights, but they wanted these fifteen foot high lights. The first night we lit it up, it looked like Fenway Park. So this is crazy.
Tried to, you know, we cut back the time that they're on now and we lowered the wattage and the, and the bulbs.
And we, we eliminated bulbs even.
Tried to curtail the complaints.
Tone it down a little bit.
Yeah, but it's still, I don't recommend it in any residential setting. It's just horrible.
That's why we've kind of encouraged the, the post light-
Yeah.
-at the driveway that stays on down to dusk.
I agree. We can put those on, you can put those on timers too. We've done that in single family. We put them on timers and they go on and off down the dusk. So there's always a light on.
What would the mail delivery here look like? Is that just one common box, key boxes, or are they?
Well, what we're doing over in Sagamore Beach is we have six individual lots with different numbers of units on each lot. So the first six units, I had a nice vinyl system built up, like a fence with two posts, one in the middle and then we had six mailboxes on top. I don't like the post office look. It looks too out of-
Too commercial?
Commercial. Looks, doesn't look like it belongs. But since these are only eight units, I mean, you could have, you know, two mailboxes for each building. It's not a big deal.
Well, the Amazon's gotta put their blocks in someplace, you know?
Pretty soon we'll be approving drone ports.
Drone, drone drops.
Yeah. Little helo pads everywhere.
Now, the, the information that you've drawn in on that plan, does that have to be permanently committed?
Yeah, I, I need to talk to Mr. Glass about some of the real fine details of the, the grading here. We've got some little numbers that need to be adjusted. But it's, it's not difficult to do and it won't affect the plan at all, except to get the numbers right. So between he and I, we can sit down and probably ten minutes figure it out and it'll be done.
Well, other information we're gonna probably be looking for is, um, he's gonna sit with Ken. There might be some information needed for, towards putting a covenant together.
Putting the bond, performance bond?
Yep.
That, that can be a condition of the, uh, that's a standard condition of our approvals on special permits, to include a performance bond and-
Is the condition based on before the first building permits pulled? Is that how it usually is?
Typically, yes.
I would have to agree with the bond, to be honest. I mean, I live in a, myself, I live in a very small cluster development. And the developer, the way it was written up is, is they would do the final top coat when the final house was built. Well, the development's now twelve years old and there's still one lot unsold and it's owned by the developer. And there's no for sale sign out front. So, they could hold up paving that road till the end of time and there's nothing we can do about it.
We have a, uh-
I just spent three hundred and fifty thousand dollars putting a top coat on a road over in Buzzards Bay.
Yeah, hundred and twenty lot subdivision. We have one lot left. All the paving's complete.
Yeah. I would, I wish I was enjoying the same result.
Any potholes?
Hmm?
Any potholes?
No, no, the road actually is in very good shape, but it's, hasn't had the final top coat applied.
We've had some, we've had developments in the past that the binder was put down, three quarter inch plywood and put on the manholes and the builder went bye-bye. And, uh, talk about a mess. Anything else for speech, shall we? And there was no money left to be found.
So we're here to pay for the mistakes of others?
Well, we, we, we learn as we go. You know, we're, we're a volunteer board.
We know how it goes. We, we, you have to have a thick skin in this business.
Like I said, we've been doing it over thirty years, so we know.
Is there any more information that we need from these gentlemen?
Shall we? You satisfied or you need anything else?
You need the operation and maintenance plan for the stormwater, which, once it's received and, and you can incorporate it into your decision and into your special permit. I don't need it tonight, but certainly it needs to be in your file and your possession uh, before you sign the actual special permit. So you need that. Discuss all the, uh, the buildings themselves or the details surrounding those structures, which is part of your department to do. Other than that, I can say that I'm satisfied with the details that Mr. Glass has put on the plans based on the review that I did and email discussions he and I have had back and forth the last couple of three days, so. We're in pretty good shape there. Just some s- minor details for, for making sure we don't get puddles in two or three spots and we'll be good.
I think, I think without limited knowledge of, uh, this process, uh, I think we're pretty, pretty impressed. You guys have been pretty good to work with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At least we've seen some doozies.
Well, you're welcome to come over to Sagamore Beach and drive through Ocean Pines over there and you'll see what we do. We've built over two hundred houses in Buzzards Bay.
What abouts?
Is, is the vinyl siding all uniform for all four structures? Is it all same color?
Trying to decide that right now because what we're doing over in Ocean Pines is we're doing a two-tone look. Where the bottom half of the buildings, we're doing cladwoods and the top half, we're doing shakes vinyl. Two different colors. It looks really nice. So I'm trying to figure out that, that line, but probably with only four buildings, if we do two-tone, it would be all the same, two-tone.
Yeah.
If I do, if I don't do the two-tone, I'm, I'm inclined not to make them all the same color. I don't like that uniform look when it's one color like that. I don't know.
Just before you said that, I was making a mental note that it looks a little stark with all clapwood representation here. So maybe something to break it up would be positive.
Well, that's what we did over there in Sagamore Beach. We did shakes, one color on the top and we're doing a different color on the bottom. Like we're doing, right now, deciding a building for us over there, the top half is gray shakes and the bottom half is this beautiful deep blue. It's really a nice combination.
What, is there gas running down the street?
Funny you ask that question.
How much, how much a foot?
Well, my brother Mark can explain that to you a little bit, cause we got one price in the beginning, then all of a sudden we get a whole different price. It's out on the high, it's out on the main highway, right, Mark?
Yeah, at the beginning it's bring out.
We, we plan on bringing it up now since it's more attractive to bring it up.
See, well, that, the reason I'm asking is that there's no, I just wanna know if it's, uh, the heating system.
Be forced out of air by, forced out of air by natural gas.
Forced out of air by natural, okay.
Then you do the air conditioning, HVAC systems.
They can get some underground propane tanks in there. Thank you, George.
I, I do, uh, I do agree with the design and I think it's a very, um, practical layout inside.
We've had, it's basically the same layout that we're doing in Sagamore Beach and we've had really good response, cause we've tweaked it a couple times.
What is the size of the deck off the back?
Typically, we do ten by twelve or twelve by fourteen.
And these are ten by twelves on the print.
Yeah.
No community pool, huh?
Only if you take the cover off.
Big liability.
I was looking to get the rest of this information and, uh, next meeting is Memorial Day.
Mr. Chairman, is there a way to go to a vote with the conditions?
The only, the only, um, drawback to that would be if there's new information you wanna bring forward. Once we close the hearing, we can't do that. How's the board feel?
Well, shall we? Satisfied?
Yeah, I think with the conditions of the, the storm drain management system, the bonding is standard language. Those, I think, are the two big items that are left here. Architecturally, I, I agree with it, layout, I agree with it. I mean, this has, it's been three evolutions of this and it's improved every single time. So I feel comfortable with that.
Any thoughts?
I agree. I like to lay it out of the house. I like the size. Fact that it's only two bedroom, you're not gonna put a huge, you know, not that it's a big subdivision, but you're not gonna put a huge strain on the school system by introducing a bunch of new families. I, 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 I like the layout.
Well, if you don't feel there's any new information to be had, you could mostly-
Entertain a motion, close the public hearing?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So move now.
No, I don't have anything written down. We'll have to do standard conditions.
You have a copy of those handy?
I didn't see one in there.
Do you want the landscape plan in a different spot? What can I put on this plan set?
I have another landscape plan here.
Should I just roll it up with this plan set?
Yeah, that sounds fine.
Has it been up here twelve years already?
Twelve years.
Time goes quick.
I've only been there a year and a half. They, they, they pulled that lot from the market last year.
Standard construction conditions, um-
Our inspections.
Yeah, so we don't have any immediate plans to, to sell the lot.
We need the, uh, drainage maintenance plan. On the special permit site plan, we put the two-year- window on that?
Two years. That's correct.
From, there's an appeal period here, right?
Yeah, there'd be an appeal period.
Was there a requirement with Baypoint to see the, was there something wanted from the homeowners association? We wanted to see that agreement?
Wanted to see the, uh, agreement, yes.
Would that be the case here?
You can ask for it, yes.
We already have it.
That makes it easy then.
We, we've already scaled it down to, from the other one, from Ocean Pines, if we needed it, so it's just-
Yeah, the, I think the issue was what, it was the pump stations there?
Yeah, we don't have any of those.
Yeah, we just, just, just to make sure that there's responsibility once it's transferred over to, you know, to the, the current owners.
I think the main thing was it's just gonna be the maintenance of those call tech systems.
Yeah.
Well, that plus the septic system, obviously.
Yeah, well, that's, that's a given.
Even your landscaping and, and driveways, I mean, if you should get potholes in the driveway, they've got to be responsible for making sure it gets fixed.
Everything's covered in the, in the condo maintenance budget for that. There's reserves for everything.
Is it written into the document itself that they are responsible for it?
It's written into the document and it shows itemized budget of each. There's a percentage on it. And there's a ten percent, by state law, I think there's a, reserves have to be ten percent, I believe, of the overall budget.
So when, when you walk away and you turn it over to the homeowners association, they have a budget in place that they can begin to work with?
Yeah, their, their monthly maintenance condo fee is based on the budget.
Uh-huh.
Like on Sagamore Beach, the end units are paying two ninety-five a month and the middle units paying two seventy-five a month. So everything's figured based on those monthly fees into the budget.
So that goes into a, uh, separate account or something where it's held?
We form a separate LLC.
The money there.
The money goes in there and then you have to do a, a yearly, um, tax return for the condo association.
Yeah, who's responsible for the exterior of the buildings?
Condo association.
So it needs a roof replacement when it's there?
Condo association.
There's no language in the, uh, association documents that allows for the residents to dissolve the association, is there?
We made sure of that.
In perpetuity.
We also have language in there about dogs.
No pribbles?
I don't know if you can get insurance anymore, if you have one, but we have size of.
Size limits?
Size limits on dogs.
Quantities?
Yeah, it's always been an issue.
You think five years is long enough for the residents to get their feet wet and... The only reason I say that is, is where I am, and, and I only know from personal experience. The developer ran the association for ten years, and then handed it over. And it's been in the hands of the homeowners now for two years, and it's been a, a world-class circus.
How many people involved, though?
Seventeen lots, it's fifteen built. And it's just, it's been horrendous. So I don't know, five years is long enough for them to get, to get a flavor for running the association? I'm assuming while you're running it, you're going to have a representative from, from the homeowners attend or...
Actually, you don't, typically, according to my attorney, you don't have to have a representation, representative until you have a certain amount of the units sold. Has to be over fifty percent.
Right. I'm just, not so much for them putting their two cents worth in, but just for them to get a flavor of what it's going to take to run it when you depart.
That order, that procedure is usually spelled out in the homeowners association document, when they will take over.
Absolutely.
Or in your purchase and sale, after fifty percent is sold, you will. However you execute it, should be spelled out.
Has to be in there.
I just wrote down a couple here. Standard, uh, standard construction conditions such as, uh, flood attendants on site, no work on weekends and holidays without permission of the building department.
They don't allow Saturdays?
The, uh, I, I think they probably do, but we include that, so he doesn't get phone calls, so. A two-year expiration on the special permit by, by date.
That means we have to start the project within the two-year period.
Yeah, well, it reads substantially complete, so.
You can, you can extend it as well.
Does that mean fifty-one percent, or?
That's a, that's a subjective term, I guess.
Our foundation's got to be in.
If you've gone through what I've gone through, you, you'd be asking the same questions.
Provide the drainage maintenance plan, proper disposal of materials, conditions of all other boards and committees are part of this approval. Uh, two-year guarantee on all plant materials, uh, supply the performance bond that we spoke of. Is there anything I missed?
Do you want to put anything in there about substantial changes to the plan? Needs to come back here.
Yeah, I think that's in our, in our standard conditions, but...
What's considered a substantial change?
Except to the board.
You make a, a change to the footprints of the buildings? I don't think the placement of a window, if you decided you're going to move a window.
Right. Okay, I just need to know, that's all.
If you were going to change the location of some of the parking spots for guests, or if you were going to change the orientation of a building or something that would affect, uh, other portions of the site, then, uh, the appropriate thing would be to come back and at least explain it to the board. The board can then decide whether it's substantial or not. If it's not, then all it means is the special permit gets modified to allow that without any public hearing or anything. If, if they consider it a major change, then you're back before the board with a notification to about this and everything else.
Okay.
So what about the years, if, if, you, you won't do any customization of the exterior of the building, right? So if someone says, I'd like a farmer's porch, or just the single entryway, would you accommodate them that way?
Uh, we've been known to.
Would we consider that a major change?
What was the?
If they, instead of the simple front entryway, if they decided, instead of the single entryway, I want a full eight-foot wide farmer's porch across the front.
We, we're not, I don't think we're really beating up on the design standard on the house, or I don't think, I wouldn't consider that a, a major change myself personally.
But they decided they want to bump it out eight feet and then do it, and there's a footprint change, yeah.
Yeah. I, I understand if it was a footprint change, I get that.
If you decide you want to move the building's kitty-goner or something, you know.
Yeah, if you want to put all white cedar shingles on it instead of right on the side, and you know, that's...
We moved those buildings after all the time Ed spent on laying them out, I don't, you'd be too happy.
You don't have a lot of room to move them.
Yeah, we don't.
Anything else I missed?
You might want to just make reference to that, that the building shall be as substantially as shown on the plans that are, whatever the date is on the plans.
And we'll reference the plan set that was submitted.
We need as-built, where it's an extension of a town road, we probably need as-built, so.
I would say that you would need it only if they're going to make changes from the plan that they have. If they build it according to the plan, you shouldn't need any. There's no further infrastructure in the town layout, other than the layout of, the laying of the water main, the location of a hydrant. There's no structures in the town way, it's in the private way. I don't see the need for it personally. You're going to get an as-built on the location. I'm sure the building inspector will require a foundation permit before he issues the permit for the building itself. So they're going to have dimensional setbacks on the foundation as-built that gets submitted to his office.
Plus the septic system will have a as-built.
Have a septic system as-built, it will go to the vote, Board of Health.
Anything else?
Oops, that's good.
I will have to, um...
You have to come into sign.
Give you the affidavit that I reviewed the hearing that I missed.
Yes.
Can I vote on that, or I have to do that first?
Typically, you do it first.
Just a question, George, um, can Mr. King vote on this?
Uh, I don't think so, or he hasn't attended.
Better have to have John be the fourth member for a special permit.
I would say, has he missed? That's the only one he's missed, right?
Yeah, that's the only one.
Yeah, that's right, we'll have to have him here for that.
Unless he resigns.
If Emmanuel comes in.
Well, yeah, e- either one, but.
Mm-hmm.
I think you need four members at least to vote on the special permit. Be all prepared and have it ready for the next meeting.
Yep.
So he could vote on it and file the next day.
Which would put us at June eleventh. There's no, the public hearing is closed, so we have nothing to continue, we just have to get that vote accomplished.
Okay. Well, your bylaws say you have to have four members, so that's, that's what we need to do.
For a special permit, yeah. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it. Do you have a call?
Yeah.
Should I come up?
Yeah, sure. Let me just show you, uh, just for a minute, Ed. Let's go out in here for a second, and I can show you.
So, discussion of zoning articles for Fall Town Meeting.
Right, the, uh, request came from the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, if we could predict what we're looking for as a board for the fall of the October Town Meeting.
Was there any confirmation on the Toby Road site as to whether General Commercial went down to Toby Road?
You mean in terms of the zoning map, which, where the boundary is?
Yeah.
We'll have to, uh, go back and confirm that, because of your recollection.
Well, I think it does on that side, because I thought, and you can help me with this, that when Wayham Crossing was built, we corrected the zoning to reflect the use, correct?
Yes.
Did it go all the way to Toby Road, or did it just?
Yes, it did. The CS zoning went all the way to Toby Road.
What are you saying, that this, this, would this change the whole zone for marijuana?
No.
No, it was, there was a discussion on the drive-through, that the action we took did not encompass the beaten property, which...
Which is a CS zoning district.
Well, what we resup, what we represented at the hearing that night was, it was CG, CG all the way to Toby. So, we need to determine whether, whether we're looking at the right zoning map or not. There were several zoning maps put for, there was, there was the base map that we approved.
Right.
And then we had a bunch of changes going up West Wayham Way, and then.
Right, there was, there was three.
One of the, a previous Board of Selectmen got upset that Town Meeting wasn't going her way, so she, she adjourned Town Meeting before we addressed it. But she asked, she made a motion to adjourn, and it was...
Because remember, the beaten property was on a, on a different map, and then the houses were on a different map, and part of the beaten property on Toby Road, there was a little section in here. We came before, they came before us, uh, to change, uh, the last strip of the beaten property, the blank lot, and the two houses, to conform with the rest of the zoning map.
The two houses where the liquor store's done?
Yes, and part of the beaten property where all these is. There was this chunk in there also, that was out of that old zoning map from before. Which was CS. Yes. Commercial Street, yeah.
Yeah, I remember changing the two houses to CS. So, that's probably something we should address, is fixing that and fixing across the street where industrial comes out to Cranberry Highway? Which is basically, I think, from Toll Road to... The, Nissan?
No, beyond Nissan, because the Buick garage, uh, when the pharmacy was there, half of that building was in one zone, where the bays are on the other side, were in industrial zone, because Ken was using it for storage, and he was in violation, he had to take the stuff out of there. That building's in two different zones.
Oh, okay.
On that lot.
Well, that, that industrial piece that comes out to Cranberry Highway is...
Right, that, that key.
Is restricting what can be done in those, which has now become a retail area. So we might want to address that. I know the two houses up there.
That's a draft, I don't know which one that one is.
Can I suggest something before I lose this thought? This sun, what was it, Sunset conveyance that she brought up at this meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Can we research that, just because, if we come back in here for vote, when somebody's been dragging new information here, and you're not going to have a solid answer.
Oh, the, uh...
I like the way that you said that, I don't think.
That's a subdivision that goes back to the nineteen forties. There's a guy named Byther, and I forget his partner. They developed that into a, a lot of lots, some of which got built on, and some didn't. No, 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 nineteen seventies, a guy by the name of Mills Swanson purchased all the unbuilt lots. And he reduced the number of lots by combining some and, and creating larger lots out of what was left. Uh, in any of the deeds that I ever saw, um, I never saw any stipulation or any kind of, uh, restriction on the type of a house that could be built. What he's talking about is the fact that the gentleman that was here, he was talking about, uh, a special permit that went before the Board of Appeals for a duplex, the way that the former building inspector referred it. I don't think it had anything to do with a, uh, any kind of restriction on the kind of a house that went in Sunny Yee's. But it would be easy enough to tell, just, you could go back to the original deeds from Byther to Mills Swanson, which would be back in the nineteen seventies, maybe the nineteen sixties. And just pick two or three of them out, and see if it had any sort of, uh, condition in the deeds of conveyance, to see if it would...
And that, and that sub...
Have a statute limitation thirty years after.
And, and that subdivision also, on, from twenty-eight, five hundred feet back, is commercial. There's a commercial venture that's in...
I think that's, I think...
Because there's a bu, uh, boatwrecking garage in here now.
But we fixed that. Remember with, uh, when Anthony was here, we did, like, spots, like, in that area was residential, we changed that section to residential.
Yeah.
Where the commercial structures, where it kind of jumps back and forth as you go down, to kind of protect the residential areas.
Yeah. Because, uh, because I know from Donald's house, which, Donald's house, where Donald lived before in the front, there was supposed to have been a strip of land that was on twenty-eight, so in other words, it was going to be almost like a community off of the main sub, furor fair, but it was never built on. Now, Charlie Road back, all in front of there, that was supposed to be the road where they used for their driveway in the front.
Well, that's where she lived.
There was a common, like, a common driveway that they had in front of those houses. I don't think, recall if it was ever part of the original...
Yeah, whether it was official.
It might have been something that, that amongst themselves.
I'm trying to think, something came before us one time, it was before Perry's Ice Cream. It was along that stretch, and they said that they had all that frontage in front of the house. They didn't have frontage directly to twenty-eight, because there was a strip in there that belonged to the original subdivision way back.
There was, there was something that was, um, going back to when, not Perry's Ice Cream was built, but B and M of the buildings that were next to him were built?
Yes.
There was some arrangement there with access going back and forth, there was a...
There was access that was supposed to go in the back in the Sunny Yee, because that was closed off, that was, uh...
Easy enough to find out.
Yeah.
No, I, I know where there's a copy of the old Byther plan. It's easy enough to find.
Yeah.
Didn't we change, didn't we change Wayham Crossing to CG?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
And I don't think that changed. I don't think that ever got made.
I think the issue was when the first time he removed that, he put, built a second kitchen in there.
Yeah, the fr, a front door doesn't do it.
So, the building inspector told him, you put that second front door in there, you just built yourself a duplex. Because of your two kitchens in your house. I remember him saying that.
Yeah.
Which he can come back and go for a special permit himself, if he wants to, it's just strength and reserve, and, and, you know, why are you not going to get something now? He just approved it for me, of course.
So, we have, uh, zoning map changes. Do we want to go to design guidelines? I'm having a conversation with Emmanuel about design guidelines. And that might be one, one aspect of...
Is that in rules and regs, or is that a bylaw change?
Could be both.
I'd be interested to see what Emmanuel has for design guidelines. I noticed they, uh, they started clearing the lot next to standard repair with that big ugly, uh, steel building.
They, they bought one on fifty-eight in Carver, and the building's not quite done, they got three tenants already. Same design, but they have a downstairs in the back. Down by the Barum Church, South Carver.
Oh, I know where that is.
Right across from the helicopter place.
Oh, that's what's going in there?
It's in. No, it's in. It's in, no, it's in.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Where are you saying that is?
On fifty-eight, where, is it New England Farms on the left now?
Before New England Farms.
Where this building is in Carver, you're saying which lot?
Over on twenty-eight, next to the welding supply standard repair.
Yeah.
The next one over, that had the big, big expansive steel with no detail, no windows, no...
Because the floor seal sign, the land sign is the one in between.
So, they...
How is steel?
Do you want those, want those notes, or do you have?
Yeah, good, thank you. Any other zoning pressing?
I thought we made Wayham Crossing Commercial General, though, and that's not what it shows on the map. Do you remember those, Charlie, those zoning changes going that way? Because, well, it always struck me that...
You made the change for the two house lots where the liquor store was gonna go.
Yeah, that was changed to Commercial Strip, but I think Wayham Crossing was changed to Commercial General, but maybe that was one of those things that didn't get changed. Remember, we had a bunch of zoning articles, and you remember the Board of Selectmen made a motion to adjourn, and we never, we never got to address them.
Oh, yeah, I remember that one.
Well, remember we suggested Commercial General up twenty-eight to Charlotte Furnace? And it didn't encompass that strip commercial that's up Charlotte Furnace? That didn't, that didn't happen, did it?
I don't recall.
I don't think any of that passed, but I guess it shows on the zoning map. It either didn't pass or didn't get addressed.
I don't know. Have to go back into the history again.
Yeah. Go through it one more time.
Which is not an easy job.
Does this impact that one these decisions?
That's one of those town meetings where I lost the lottery, and I was sat there for, I think, at least a couple of long nights, and then they adjourned, and I didn't get to addressing.
The Board of Appeals did approve the variance for a drive-through on the corner lot, or between Toby and Cranberry Highway, last week.
Which they should have done initially, if they were going to, because even if everything was correct, they'd still have to wait probably a hundred and twenty days to get the AG's approval on this change.
No, you can, you can go, it's, the, the time that the zoning article is, is voted on is when it's, when it's in force, and there's a risk involved.
Yeah, it'd be at risk, if it all gets bounced back, then where are they?
Right. And the AG, the Attorney General, has to approve it within ninety days.
I don't know how all these town meeting warrant articles were only available at the town clerk's office. They weren't in print anywhere, and I was told you couldn't even go in and get a copy, you had to get it, read it, and give it back to them. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but especially zoning articles, I don't, I don't think that constitutes due notice.
Well, at least we got the shopping cart.
Yeah, exactly, we have sixty-five million dollar budget. More discussion on shopping carts and budget.
We've spent ten million on the sewer line, but we, the only vote that went out up to that point was on the shopping carts.
Yeah, we wanted rules and regs, shopping carts have to be like a visible fence, so if they try to leave the property, they could...
We'll lock us up.
And what, I, I got, I had to leave there early, but the minor foreclosing of that school, you're saying it was improper hearing? You still make a decision on that, the school department?
Is that done deal?
They did.
Oh.
Yeah.
I thought it was being challenged, so it wasn't, it was unofficial public, the public hearing didn't call, or the call.
Not aware of that, can look into that. So if you're, if you're finished with the zoning, then there's one more item I wanted to, to tell you about, which is, we have a, one of these conditions where the road wasn't fully constructed. It's a binder course.
Pull the, pull the bond.
Bellatera Circle?
No, Preservation Lane.
Preservation Lane, oh.
And it has a substantial amount of money in the bond.
Preservation Lane, what the hell is that, George?
Gromesit.
Off of Gromesit.
What was the guy's name?
Preston Prescott.
That might be one of the homeowners.
That's the one on the left-hand side?
Preservation is on the right-hand side, going toward the Leveannock, I believe.
You're asking to pull the bond?
Yeah, we'll be asking for you to pull the bond.
Is the company still in business?
Don't know yet. But it's, but it's come up, and we're gonna be researching it, making determination about what it's going to cost to approve.
Yeah, then they're gonna go and...
Pull the bond.
Make, make, make a...
Actually, I had a discussion we had in recent months on the bond, is there something for this particular case that was just here, about renewal of that fund?
Casey, no, 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 no.
There was an issue, they came up with a system running facility that they want lapsed, and they voluntarily put, I believe it was a cash bond in place.
Yeah.
But then they went back and renewed the bond again in the meantime, and I have to go out and take a look and make sure that the minor items that were left in that bit.
There was, there was a, the landscaping, right?
Good thing for the rest area.
What we determined was, when we write the language on the bond, it is the responsibility of renewal.
Yeah, it has to be renewed within, it has to be notification of the expiration within a certain date, and renewed before the expiration actually takes place.
Right, so is that, is that standard language now?
Or automatically renewed until such time as it's...
It's standard language in this bond?
Now, now it's standard language.
I don't know. The unfinished road, I think you have to notify developer, whoever's ever on the W nine, of your intent to collect, foreclose on the bond, is it cash or...
I'm not sure.
And give them a period of time to respond.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go through the right process, I just wanted to tell you, because it's one of the biggest bonds, that we have, performance bonds that we have sitting out there at this point. And we're trying to clear up all the old, old bonds.
Get some addressed through a post office box in Arizona.
If it would help, if you can get them to cooperate, if that's all that's left to do is the top coat, is time the release of the bond with the work. We did that on another case where the developer was not able to do the work up front, and then wait for the bond, so... An arrangement was made that the paving was done, the developer and the contractor...
And to check across.
You know, hand it, sign it, hand it, you know.
Yeah.
If you're smart, we'll do that, or maybe get a surety bond to get it once that...
Well, well, if the town has to go in and finish, they do it at prevailing wage, and there's usually not enough money to do it that way. And you run into the problem where, if it's not a town-accepted way, can they do the work?
Wait, would we estimate the bond value, we're not using the prevailing wage to do that?
I think now we are.
We increase it by fifty percent. They, they come up with a cost estimate, I took a review, get a unit price, look at it, see if it's reasonable, check the quantities and so forth, then they come up with a total number, and we have insisted recently to increase that by fifty percent. And typically, a performance bond only, should only have a limited life anyway, or the time period in which to act, I shouldn't say the bond, but typically, I've seen places where, you know, they wanna get things done, and they're not in the planting season, or they wanna go into the next paving season to get things finished, so you discuss it with them, say, yeah, we should have everything completed by, say, June first.
Just a sleeve, just a sleeve, we recycle those.
You know what worked real well, and might be something to suggest to these guys, is whatever bank they were, would have the bank hold the bond, and let them be the guarantors of the work.
Tripartite agreement.
Tripartite agreements at town.
That wasn't a tri...
Or a passbook account.
I think that was probably more...
There's this sidewalk scalped out of there.
Because the bank basically agreed that if the work wasn't done by this date, they would be responsible for finishing it.
Yeah, but that turned out to be, well, the language and stuff turned out to be a bunch of bullshit.
It worked once, I got them to pave the place next to me, there, the Rosemary Lane.
I do think we should be a little more transparent with this bond, I mean, we got months into these guys, and threw that out at the very end. Not that it's, it's a monstrous expense, for whatever the project's worth, three million, but we should tell them, sort of calculating that in.
If it's, if it's not in the regulations, it probably shouldn't be. Because you're working under the zoning regulations and special permits, and probably wouldn't be a bad idea to have that in the bylaws, so that nobody can say they don't know about it.
That's probably something we can look at, is putting tighter parameters in for achieving a special permit and identifying those parameters, because a lot of them are just subjective, so to speak.
For the Fall Town Meeting.
We did it with the, was it the marijuana one, or what? It was the drive-through one, the special permit, we put in...
Conditions of approval, yeah, other criteria. There is a section in the, in the bylaws, zoning bylaw, that specifies that performance bonds may be required for completion of the work.
For private as well as...
For private work as well.
Well, look at it this way, you got eight homeowners here that...
But maybe we can...
Could basically have a contractor walk off and leave the job unfinished, even though it's not a public way or anything.
Well, that's why I was so specific with them, are you gonna get the civil work done? Why that was coming to mind with me was the whole discussion we had in that forty B project there, and what if they only build one building? Right, how does the rest of that get completed? Because it was all perpetuating on, sell one, and then the next one, and the next one, and the next one.
Especially in light of the fact that the infrastructure didn't, wasn't restricted to one lot, the drainage for this lot was on that lot.
It turned upside down now, as of last Wednesday night.
What happened?
The motel was now phase one, the rear lot is phase two, and what was phase one is now three.
They still got the four separate owners?
Well, that hasn't been...
Resolved yet?
You know, yeah.
That, that's still the same, based on the housing tax...
That was to get access through the Cranberry Highway plan?
There was some concern about them leaving the motel there, in the fact that access to the construction was gonna be going through completed neighborhoods. Whereas if you had built phase one first, phase two and three would require construction equipment and everything to run right past those completed units. And to some extent, it still may happen, but it isn't, to put phase two in the back, now they can work their way to the front, and actually, there was some discussion about actually making that phase one. Let them build the most real units first, so that they can work their way out and not have to be interfering with...
Are they gonna put a deed restriction on the entire project before they put a shovel in the ground?
I haven't, I haven't seen anything like, like that.
They, they would have to for the low-income housing tax credits, but that doesn't mean, but they've subdivided into three, three lots, so, with three different ownerships, so the deed restriction wouldn't necessarily apply right away.
They reduce them any to, did they reduce their units to match their parking?
No. No, they came up with information that suggested the parking met the demands of their other, other projects.
They gave us a list of probably six or eight projects they've done.
Yeah, but I don't know exactly how full those are.
How much is Catra gonna charge him to go in there? They wanted fifteen grand to go to Walmart, didn't they?
They really?
I don't know if they got it.
I'm gonna build a parking garage, shoot. The parking garage in there will put asphalt turf on the top, tennis courts for residents.
Well, actually, if they just build one building, it'd be okay.
Were you buying your marijuana? Were you buying your marijuana, Ray?
It'd be full of nips and... And blunt wrappers.
I know it's going out that marijuana, the two, two townships pulled out of that deal, right?
It's in the motion to adjourn, George?
I would. All in favor?
Aye.
Nine twenty-seven.